I think we'll jump right in so that we can afford our presenters that are, yes, I see, online to be able to get in. And Mr. Arum is here representing the building committee tonight. So let's call this regular meeting of the City Council on WPCA to order. Today is Monday, July 19th, 2021. Still 6:29. We're in the City Hall auditorium. Participating this evening, the Azu is Councilwoman Oliver. And participating in person, I have Councilwoman Waldron, Councilwoman Wagner, Councilwoman Rubino, Councilwoman Luette, and Councilman Cavanaro. Before we begin the meeting, could we please stand and pledge the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So item number one on the agenda. I'll introduce a motion to open the meeting to the public in accordance with Section 4, subsection E of the City Council on WPCA Meeting Rules of Procedures. Thank you, Councilwoman Rubino. Seconded by Councilwoman Wagner. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're open to the public. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address the board at this time? If you would. To the microphone, state your name and your address, please.
Good evening. My name's Howley Daly, it's Mark Daly. We live in Harwinton, but between us and our two children, we own four homes in Torrington. So we feel we have the ability to speak to a point. Okay, we're here because I know Mayor Carbone, we've spoken, and we've spoken with Brett Simmons. And you have a letter, I believe, and an email, which gives a synopsis of some of what we're talking about. Forgive me, this is not my wheelhouse public speaking. But the bottom line is to get free movies once a week, game night, to the people. We were willing to pay for the license, which is expensive. So we were asking for once a week. In a building that's not being used for those hours, it was just Saturday night. And then Sunday morning, a tenant was going to bring in $14,400 to the city a year. They were bringing the equipment that we could use, so it'd be high-quality equipment. Because of this, we couldn't do pop-ups, which was later on suggested. But we began speaking with Brett and Chairwoman, and they were extremely pleased to receive our proposal right before COVID hit. And we met with Ms. Sherry, the for-profit business in there. And we were talking about it. We spoke to the Health Department, who was okay with what we were doing. The Fire Marshal was okay with the amounts. And then from further discussion with Mayor Carbone, we found out that, I guess, PAL was interested in some buildings and then decided not to. Well, at the end of COVID, we started realizing that we should start talking about the future and planning. Contacted again. All of this had been put in writing to the committee and apparently had been presented without us. And we were told that we would be given the opportunity to present it, that it was important, because it was a proposal that had a lot of detail. They told us it was well thought out. And then they wrote us and said that they decided they had no interest in it. And I don't know, who doesn't want free movies for the people? I don't know. It's baffling. We started a Facebook page at that point, Torrington Community Center, not knowing, throwing it out there. Haven't really worked it, just had some thoughts, put them out there, did a poll. And 195 people voted for it, and nine people voted against it. I don't know what that was exactly, but these are the odds. It kind of makes sense. People thought it was an idea they could use. There's a lot of people who have been depressed. We have stories of teens, children, adults who are depressed. It would be a great thing. So we also ended up having, we still have people on the site leaving incredible comments, heartbreaking and heart-touching comments. The Women's Club, 100% behind. People just, what can we do to help? Please, could you just, I mean, really touching. They were just like, please do this. We've been told to come to you, folks. We don't know what else to do. We've basically only been dealing with two, maybe three people throughout the time. So it's kind of opening it up in the hopes that a discussion about how to make it possible. We've been told it's impossible, or it's not possible. And I don't know, all pretty smart here. I think in a building that's open, the building's very rundown, too, and the tenant was going to, like, do work to help fix it and maintain it. So we're baffled. People are telling us to come to you, folks. I know that you don't run the committees. I know that's not your business to oversee everything they do. But every now and then, somebody gets it wrong, maybe. And maybe this is a case where it could be looked at, and maybe it is possible just to get those free movies to the people. You know, we can have them sign up online. There's a whole plan. It could work. And we just don't get why it's so difficult. There is a tenant there that's for profit. I believe it's 25% of her income goes to the town. Been there almost, it's, we've been told, 20 years. Maybe after that long, a look could. We weren't even going to say that we needed the place when she was there. So I should clarify that. That's not it at all. We were perfectly willing to use time slots that she wasn't using. The issue, I think, was that there's mats there that they didn't want to move. And so we're trying to work around that. And that we were going to leave equipment there, because we wanted to put some quality equipment in to make, we had the quality equipment. And they were like, well, we can't leave that there. You'll have to just bring it in and out for pop-ups. And we already addressed that, but somehow it became unknown as to why that wasn't going to work. The license is way too expensive to do pop-ups. You'd have to advertise all the time. You'd try and get people in for one night. It just, we could have talked about it, but we were basically just told no. And that's what we realized at the meeting. So forgive me for being, I don't know if you. No. I mean, the Torrington Community Center page has more information. And, you know, we're just asking for it to be looked at closer. And yeah, we know Parked Rec has a lot on their plate. Maybe it was just not wanting to do more. I don't know. But we don't expect you to oversee things. But we do know you have the power to oversee. And according to what we read, you have the power to do legislative things to perhaps use the buildings or whatever. So I don't know. I'm sure I forgot this.
Our feeling is buildings have been sold, reallocated, demolished for different purposes. And I think that you folks have the power to reallocate things if it's deemed to be in the best interest of the residents of the city. And what we're proposing is not only going to not cost the taxpayers a dime, it's going to actually bring in extra revenue. And it just really makes no sense to us at all that we're having to fight to give something. I just don't understand.
Okay. Thank you.
We're walking. Any questions?
Yeah. So I apologize. So public comment, you're allowed to come and make comments. This is not, it wouldn't be a dialogue. There would be no exchange of information.
Thank you.
But thank you.
We're new at this.
I know, that's fine.
We just try to do things with people.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, we're still open to the public. Mr. Buddhist?
Good evening, everybody. How was everybody today?
Good.
Very good. How's my man up there looking? Look at him up there, great, that guy. Couple of things. I'm going to start out with that beautiful log tank that's in front of City Hall. I love it just the way it is. Please do not take it to Franklin Street. It'll get destroyed. It's beautiful. It sets off the City Hall beautiful there. It's been there all these years, and nobody's bothered it, and nobody has said anything to do with it. I think all it is is about the dollar. Somewhere along the line, money talks. I guess something is going on. But personally, I'll be 70 in December. That tank has been there for a long, long time. And like I say, it may need a little spruce and up or something, but I think it looks beautiful right there. That's number one. Number two, Franklin Street parking lot. It was a beautiful pig job, but now it's all torn up. But I think in the long run, like I say, it's the dollars. They set greenback, you know? It's what I think it is, is that there. But I think some of the money can be spent on a lot of these roads that the gas company, the gas company, you see what they're doing to every street in town? You can't drive down it without going bump, bump, bump. Why do I buy a new truck 2017? Why? I don't know. I should have just kept my old 98 Dodge pickup I had, but I bought a new 2017. But I don't care where they go. They do a terrible job. And I've been in construction for 35 years and retired out of construction with pavement, the same kind of bull crap that they do. It's all comes to compaction, the name of the game. And then they pave it like, I don't know. It's terrible. The other thing is the school. I know I'm cut for time, but I can go on into some of these things a little longer, a little further. The other thing is the school. And I'm pretty good with the new school, but that three-letter word, B-U-T. The problem is with that is, I think the old school, when they built it, I don't think it, over the years, it took the attention that it should have at times, when the things were going bad with it. Somehow or another, we skipped that budget. We skipped that operation. We, we'll wait, we'll wait. But I think personally, and Mr. Lawrence had it right on the head, if they took care of it in the beginning, right along, that school would have been, you could have made a few updates to improve a few things, maybe add it on a little bit. But to do a new school, I'm, like I say, I'm fine with a new school. But I don't think, in the near future, I don't think this school, the new school, should be neglected like the first school was. And the new, the old school was built in the 60s.
No, I'm just listening. These zoning hearings are just forever.
Is he saying something to me?
No, I think somebody didn't realize they were unmuted.
Oh. Okay. The other thing is, I know this ain't the place to talk about it, but I'm going to open up my big mouth. And I got one. And I'm not afraid to use it. Sometimes it doesn't come out right, but you know what? I don't really care. I say what I say from my heart. Sometimes it doesn't come out right. But in the end, I think everybody understands what I'm talking about. That's number two. So the thing I'm worried about, I don't have any kids going to school. My kids are all gone. They're not in school anymore. So my problem is with these teachers' union, with the CRT, with all this crap I've been hearing day after day, month after month, this school, that school. They're teaching them everything, the wrong stuff in school. I mean, I don't know what these teachers teach these kids in school here. But I'm just saying, if I find out and I hear of something going on, I would personally, and I would go up and down the street carrying my sign and pitch all the people that are in the school department on that committee. I'd get rid of all of them, every one of them. But I can't say for sure what's going on in the school, because I'm not there and I don't catch it. But I'm going to get more into it, and I'm going to put my foot down and clean my shoes off a little bit. And I'm going to look into it a little deeper. Like I say, this is not the meeting here in front of you people, but I think it's the educational. And I don't know if it's Tuesdays or Thursdays that they come, but I will find out what day it is. And I will bring my big mouth here. It's the teachers' union, just with these masks, the same damn thing, the masks. We got to have masks, kids in school from kindergarten to sixth to 12th grade. For what? We don't need them. We don't need them. It's crazy. I don't know. I just can't see that happening, you know? And the other thing is, I'm going to just touch one small basic thing, and then I'm going to go sit down, because I think some people have probably heard enough of me. But like I say, I don't really care. I'm here. I'm on this side of the grass. So, and the other thing is that, this is for, this is towards Eleanor Carbone. I appreciate her for over the times. I mean, we've been in a few disagreements a few times. But I made her happy on a Christmas Eve one night, dressed as Santa Claus. And I think it put a smile on her face. But I think I'm very happy that she's going to take this term again. And we got to, we got to do, not just this city of Torrington. I think other cities have to look more into Republican. I mean, I got nothing against Democrats, but I think they're going in the wrong direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buddhist. We're still open to the public. Is there anyone else from the public wishing to address the board at this time? All right. Seeing and hearing none, we're going to move on to item number two on the agenda. I'll introduce a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting held July 6, 2021. So thank you, Councilwoman Wagner. Seconded by Councilwoman Luette. Questions or comments on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstained.
One abstention for the record would be Councilwoman Oliver. Okay, item three. And this is just a presentation this evening from Verge, Torrington Solar One. I believe that the presentation documents were sent in advance and this afternoon, there was a memo that was advanced to the council members. So I see Brian Fitzgerald. I'm not sure who would be presenting this evening.
Is there a timeframe on the presentation there?
I didn't, I didn't put a number.
We'll be very short with our presentation. This is Mike Reiner. I represent Verge. I believe Will Herschel is also on the call.
I am.
And I believe there may be one other.
Brian Fitzgerald, yes.
Brian, okay.
And so, Mike, would you like to take it away?
Go ahead, Mike. Let me start right in and give everyone. Let me see, am I, there we go. Okay. So I have been speaking with Attorney Musial for the past two or three weeks about Verge's project. And I believe that the council may be familiar with the tax stabilization agreement that was presented to the city. And at this point, I understand that the city is disinclined to enter into that agreement. What Attorney Musial suggested, that I speak with the City Council and explain our position, and perhaps sway you into reconsidering and entering into a discussion. The tax stabilization agreement was a proposal for 20 years to pay the sum of $14,812.50 per year, or a total of $296,250 in property taxes for the 20 years. I understand, as I said, that was rejected because the city feels through some of the data that was presented that the total would be much greater than that. And what I'm, what we are here today to show you is that in every scenario available, we believe that the amount in the tax stabilization agreement will garner the greatest amount of money for the city. And Will wanted me to present this to you prior to it coming out in the direction that we feel it will. And what I mean by that is that there are several other scenarios by which the money will be less. And the other scenarios are that when the caps on virtual net metering are raised, the property then could become 100% tax exempt. I can tell you that this property is already in the process to sell its extra capacity to another municipality. And when this, when that happens, then under a state statute, the property will then be fully exempt, which means that the city would garner zero money. The tax stabilization agreement contemplates that and says that the amount per year will continue during the 20 years, regardless of what could happen. There's also additional legislation that would cap solar projects at an amount, as stated in my letter, of $5,000 per megawatt as a uniform capacity tax. In that case, this agreement is based on $7,000 per year, the tax stabilization agreement. So again, it's a 20% increase over that particular scenario that could play out. And the last one is that I believe that the city believes that the income that's going to be derived is a scenario based on what the assessor is stating is the fair market value of the property and the fair market value of the personal property. And I, in my opinion, and I do many, many tax appeals of personal property and real property per year, the property tax is well over its fair market value. The income derived from this solar project is under $18,000 per year. That does not comport to an $800,000-plus value of the land. Additionally, solar panels are personal property that have a very small value at its inception. And the personal property tax that the city is using is based on the value of the purchase, and it does not follow the case law on personal property tax, which is the value in use, which are two very different things. So in all those scenarios, my client believes that the tax stabilization agreement would garner the city the most amount of money. And as I said, the idea was to come before the City Council to explain this to you and hope that you would reconsider the position that's been taken and enter into further communication on this.
And Mike, if I may, really quick, Mayor Carbone, just for a second here, just to add a little color. Mayor, as you know, we've been talking about this project for an extended period of time and went through a presentation regarding virtual net metering credits, their availability to the municipality if they so chose, et cetera. And also talking about, you know, from the inception, we'll go back to the planning and zoning meeting where we had this or meetings that we had beforehand, talking about continuing to have a tax stabilization agreement in the event that we were able to participate in the virtual net metering program. As Mike mentioned, that would make us, I guess, tax exempt. And so I would just say that those are the scenarios that Mike appropriately outlined. But we're still looking and would desire to, you know, work with the city to come up with a TSA outside of any sort of, you know, additional appeals process, if possible. And as we had originally offered, you know, to the extent that we were successful in getting virtual net metering capacity allocated to this project, whether it be for the benefit of Torrington, which it sounds like it will not be, for the benefit of municipality, we would still be looking to pay property taxes as we kind of originally proposed. So that's just something that I wanted to call out, because it's consistent with what we had spoken about before. But everything that Mike just outlined is correct in terms of the three scenarios as we see them going forward. And our preference, if we could have one, would be to work with the city to make that a reality.
Okay. Thank you, Brian and Attorney Weiner. So Weiner. So there is, we put this on the agenda as presentation only. There certainly is no, you know, no agenda item for a vote on it. The floor is open if the council members have questions. But I would draw your attention to the memorandum that was drafted by Rista Malanca. As you all may recall, tax abatements, tax programs are all funneled through the Economic Development Director's office. She, Rista, is quite diligent in her research, whether it's regarding a request under a state statute or under one of the city's policies. And I think that her cautionary note in her memorandum that if the council is giving any consideration to the consent of a tax abatement under this statute, that it is her recommendation that the request be reviewed by legal counsel for compliance with the statute and that a legal opinion be forthcoming. Questions or comments or other information you may need? Thoughts?
I think the recommendation from Rista is a good one. You know, it's not unknown that I've not been supportive of this project coming in the midst of COVID, really without. And I know Brian, who worked hard to communicate with interested neighbors, but it really has not been, wasn't the environment to really have a good public forum for this project. So I will be very interested in knowing what Vic's review of the statute and his recommendation.
Thank you. Other thoughts?
Yeah, for me personally, as we go down this road with more of these requests, I would, in addition to, I agree that I would like to see, agree to what Rista is recommending from a legal point of view. There's a legal point of view, but I also would love to get somebody within the city who understands the technology, who has, who is representing specifically the city of Torrington, not any vested agent, not any specific party, who is knowledgeable enough, articulate enough, and who will come forward and say, okay, here's how we need to look at these type of situations. And quite frankly, the City Council, we are obligated to vote in support what's in the best interest of our taxpayers and the people of Torrington, period, end of story. And I would like a lot more expertise from our side on this whole issue. Okay?
Yes. So in addition to the tax abatement, which speaks of itself through policy and statute, the virtual net metering and all of that is what you really want?
Really, yes.
Okay, good, yes.
The bigger picture.
I can absolutely have.
I agree.
Very true, yeah.
Also, the proposal is just that there's been no approval on the state level for this project. So I don't think we can discuss anything till we get more information.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? All right, then we'll have a drink.
May I make a comment?
Sure.
I just wanted to point out a couple of things. First of all, whether, I understand, and it was, it's before my time in being involved in this, that the project itself may or may not have had complete support. But I'm not talking about the project. The project is done. I'm talking about the taxes. And what I was trying to point out to everyone is that the proposal that was given for the tax stabilization agreement will be the biggest economic gain for the town, for the city as far as taxes realize in the next 20 years. That was my point in explaining all that to you, is that there are, there are each independent scenario, of which the last one about a property tax appeal, that 100% is within my client's control. It is their right to bring a property tax appeal. And as I said, I do many of those. And I am very confident that its number will come to be less than the tax stabilization agreement. The other two agreed. They're, right now, they're not passed. They're speculative. But in our opinion, they will happen. So what I'm trying to say effectively to the council members is if you're trying to maximize taxpayer dollars, you should, I urge you to consider the agreement that has been provided to you, because in all of these scenarios, the city will gain less tax money. One of which, as I said, is completely within the taxpayers' control, my client, and the other two, it's just a matter of time, in our opinion. So, but we only need one of the three to take place for the city to garner fewer tax dollars than in the tax stabil- tax dollars than in the tax stabilization agreement.
Yeah, I think just in response to that, you, you have come late to the game. And I appreciate your opinion, but you know, I don't see any jobs, you know, being brought here through Veragee. I don't see any tourism. I don't see any other opportunities that really will benefit, you know, our town and the people who live here. So that's my point. So to ask for a tax abatement, you know, at this point, I'm, I'm anxious to hear the opinion of our corporate counsel. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I have just one more quick comment on, Mayor? This is, just very quickly, you know, it was our desire to provide virtual net metering credits to Torrington from our initial discussions, and that, those offers, for whatever reason, were, were rejected or denied. So we, we recognize your position, and we're, we're trying to make the best of the situation, understanding the circumstances.
Thank you. All right. So we'll wait for council's opinion in regard to the state statute and let this play out as it will.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Okay.
For your time.
Moving to, thank you. Moving into item four, I'll entertain a motion to approve the purchase of camera equipment for 22 police vehicles from Axon Enterprises, Inc. of Scottsdale, Arizona, for $469,920. Thank you, Councilwoman Rowett. Councilwoman Wagner seconded. Are there questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item five, and I see Mr. Arum is here. If there are questions, I'll entertain a motion to appoint ONG Industries, Inc. to serve as construction manager of the new middle high school central office administration project for a construction budget maximum construction price of $130,790,568, and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement that has been approved by the building committee and board of education.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Wagner. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Cavanero. Are there questions?
I do.
Councilman Cavanero.
Yeah. Mr. Arum, in, in the documentation that we have in front of us, is there, first of all, I absolutely do want, let me just start off by saying I do want ONG as project manager for this. We've had experiences with other builders in Torrington without a project management team, and we've all suffered the consequences. So yes, I support that. What I want to know about this is that, within this document, like on page four, why are we getting very specific specs on office size, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, in, in this particular agenda item? Are you asking the council to approve what's in here with, with these office specs?
The ONG, we went out to bid, we had four bidders.
Yeah.
One we rejected, that we needed all the specs, and the other three we interviewed, and we, and they, and ONG was the lowest bidder. So then we went to doing the contract.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I didn't hear your question, I'm sorry.
Well, I, what I, what I'm seeing here is program specs, right? Detailed description, office of the superintendent, assistant superintendent.
Right.
Which details very specific things. If we approve, I'm just, I guess I'm confused by, if we're approving them as the project manager for the whole, for the whole project, these very specific sort of individual specs here.
Educational specs.
Yeah.
As you know, we, we've had, we've had discussions with, after it was, after we went out to bid and so forth, we've had, you know, numerous, numerous discussions with teachers, with principals and so forth. We are reviewing the educational specs because there's some pathways are a little different. So we're working on that right now because we have to, the educational specs have to be approved by the board of ed and by the state board of ed.
Okay, but does this limit us in terms of, again, there's the building committee which you chair and the work that's going on, and I've been sitting in, as you know, the last couple of meetings, and there's still clearly a, a good deal of discussion.
Correct.
About some of the development and, and the, the overall flow.
Correct.
And by, and personally, I, I wanted to bring up at the next meeting, some of the things I saw on the floor plan related to where certain segments of the, of the people within, within, who would be housed in this building were actually situated within their floor plan. In other words, where, where the admin was situated there versus, you know, the students, and, and I had some concerns, and I wanted to raise those. Does this limit your committee, the building committee, to make changes to that floor?
No, it does not limit. We just want you to execute the contract, but we have to give you all of the documentations or insurance and everything else.
If, if, right, so if the building committee decides to change the, the, the last floor plan that they saw, which designated certain areas for admin and certain areas for, and, and people like me who had questions.
Not you.
Those could still be addressed, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay, very good. That's it.
And if you have any questions, if you can send them to Mario myself or before that.
Absolutely.
Because we're meeting this week also on the, on the corridor issue.
Understood.
With the super tuncles, they were not at that meeting, so we're meeting with them.
And this doesn't lock in any, any?
No, no, we're, we're still doing this, you know, we're still, we just started design development, which won't end until September.
That, that was my understanding too.
Correct.
So we're good, thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
All right, other questions for Mr. Arum or on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
One abstention.
Oh, thank you. For the record, one abstention would be Councilman Rabino.
We'll accept that abstention. Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Mr. Arum.
And, you know, if you have any questions, because I send you the agendas and everything, so don't hesitate to contact Mario and myself, and I know Paul will, and I know Sharon does, so appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good night. Item number six, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the public works superintendent and purchasing agent, and authorize the mayor to award, execute, and administer the tree trimming and removal services for city departments to contract to a splendid tree expert LLC of Willow Grove, Pennsylvania and East Windsor, Connecticut.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron.
Second.
And seconded by Councilwoman Rabino. Questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, I'll entertain a motion to accept corporation council's recommendation and authorize the mayor pursuant to CGS Section 12-179 to release the lien described in Attorney Michelle's memo dated July 19th, 2021.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Wagner.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Waldron. Questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item eight, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and authorize the eight tax refunds indicated analyst dated July 19th, 2021.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Wagner. And seconded by Councilwoman Cavanero. Questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item nine, I'll entertain a motion, acting herein as a water pollution control authority to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and authorize one sewer user refund, fee refund indicated unless dated July 19th, 2021.
I'm over.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rabino.
Second.
And seconded by Councilwoman Waldron. Questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item ten, I'll entertain a motion to consider business by department heads.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rowett. Seconded by Councilwoman Rabino, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll do the easy ones, city clerk's office, anything this evening? I see on our call we have Mr. Drew. Anything this evening, Ray?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. In regards to Councilor, Councilman Cavanero's request, facilities manager, Sikora and myself will prepare an assessment of the B and M in regard to the Veragee project to give you some more information on the viability and the benefits or not benefits in regard to that project in the city of Torrington.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Yes. I, I know, and they had done the presentation, they had said they had presented this opportunity to us. Can you share why we, what were the pros and cons to, to the benefits?
One of our biggest, Councilwoman, one of our biggest concerns is with these contracts, you're entering to a requirement to purchase the designated kilowatt hours for, or megawatt hours for a period of 20 years. So looking at that, we're trying to do a full assessment to see if this is actually over a 20-year period, if this is cost benefit to the city of Torrington. And, and that's what we need to take a deeper dive into, is, you know, locking in a purchase price over a 20-year period is scary. I mean, it's like you taking out the mortgage on your house, it's the unknown. You know, interest rates go up, interest rates go down. So we need to take a real good deep dive into it and see if this is a viable savings. You know, they're presenting $1.7 million savings over a 20-year period, but we need to take a deep dive into this to see if, you know, to lock us into purchasing the electricity from Veragee for a period of 20 years, you know, is substantial. So we need to have all of the data and do a deep analysis to see if this in the long term would be beneficial.
So a follow-up question, if I may, Mayor?
Please.
Is the other solar project that has been proposed down on South Main Street, I'm curious, has there been any conversations about securing any, any of that electricity or power?
So as you know, we did enter a lease option agreement with U.S. Solar for the landfill. So at, at this point in time, they have not been awarded a project. So they're in their second year of submissions, they're submitting again this year for a second project. So that also is something that we need to consider is because that is actually on our property, and so we need to take that into consideration as well.
Thank you. Other questions for Mr. Drew? Mr. Cavanero?
Ray, isn't also true, I mean, I as well am very, you know, hesitant and concerned about a 20-year, you know, a, a 20-year commitment with new technology. You know, just my experience is the acceleration of new tech, new and improved technologies is, you know, is ever increasing and, and it becomes, again, we lock ourselves in unnecessarily. What's, are there, are you even, are you planning on agreeing when, when we have council advise us some more specific data that we could use to look at in terms of, what I'm thinking of is this, do we know, or do you know, do people in your office know, like what is it likely for over 20 years that in Northwest Connecticut, that other technologies will be accelerating? Do we know people who are doing R and D on, on wind or geothermal, which might then, you know, be a much smarter choice for our particular city? Do we know if that stuff is happening?
We're not aware of any other type of newer technology. I know in Connecticut, there's wind technology. We have tried, as you're aware, there have been some wind, opti-wind, tried a project here in Torrington that was unsuccessful in the past. Connecticut down on the shore is pursuing a offshore wind farm. So not aware of any new opportunities. You know, obviously, you know, we have two-sol energy in Torrington as a manufacturing facility. You know, that technology keeps advancing to the point, you know, you know, maybe 10 years, that becomes cost effective. We don't know. Those are all the things we, we have to take into consideration.
Right.
You know, if, if we lock our largest, one of our concerns is that we lock our largest energy users, i.e. the, you know, fire headquarters, the police department, city hall, public works, and by far, the largest being the wastewater treatment plant into a 20-year contract, does that then eliminate possibility for us to enter into more lucrative energy savings in the future?
Yeah. No, I, I sure, I absolutely share that concern, which is why we need more time.
Absolutely.
Is there a way to talk with Ed about the solar panels on Forbes?
So then, I was just.
Production ratio.
I was just going to, yeah, I was just going to suggest.
And what was that agreement that was taken there?
And that was slightly different, a different agreement, and I can have, the board of education, when we do, when Mr. Drew brings back his report, will include, what do we, what do we already know? We know that on both Torrington Ford and on Forbes School, there are solar panels already, that there may be opportunities with other solar investments that are directly related to city assets, such as our landfill, our city buildings directly. And when Mr. Drew was first looking at this long-term commitment with a somewhat volatile market, electricity is a commodity, we've received the benefit of participating in a consortium through our Connecticut Conference of Municipalities where there have been savings. It, it was, you know, a calculated risk analysis that we were taking at the time, especially when it related to the tax abatement that was being requested. But absolutely, I think it's, it's, it's important for the council to have all that information before you, regardless of whether or not the tax abatement request moves forward.
Yeah.
Because these opportunities will continue to present themselves.
I, I agree. And just personal note, I, I, I thought the presentation tonight had a certain tone to it that me personally never responds to. Well, I'll just leave it at that.
If I may add additionally, that we have been approached by no less than half a dozen other solar firms to do the same type of program. So that, you know, and that's why, you know, from my perspective, and, you know, obviously bringing down the new facilities manager, that we need to do a deep dive, you know, this is, this is a long-term commitment that, you know, we need to make sure that, you know, those projections are, are viable and sustainable for the city of Torrington.
I would actually agree with Paul.
I'm so shocked.
I love agreement with Paul.
There we go.
Because I feel like the presentation was, you know, I mean, when they mentioned, you know, we didn't take that opportunity, I'm thinking, you know, I, I felt a bit.
Patriotist.
That. But also, I feel like, you know, we know public works and how hard you work and how considerate you are of, of what, you know, agreements we go into. So I appreciate Drew, your, your, your interest in deep diving and also your hesitancy of, of even coming forth with interest in it. It's a sales pitch that, you know, I, I think I'm grateful, you know, as just the elected official, that you actually hesitated before moving forward. So thank you for that.
And I'm in agreement with Ann and Paul and everybody, I believe on this. I appreciate all your work and, and effort to help us through this situation because I was less in place with the presentation myself.
Thank you, Council.
Other questions for Mr. Drew before I let him off the hot seat? All right. I see that Chief Baldwin is on the call. Chief, anything to add this evening?
No, Mayor, I just wanted to thank the council for the support and for voting, moving forward the, the purchase of the dash cams for our cruisers. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. Bill Mayor, is anything to add this evening?
I don't have anything, Mayor, but thank you so much.
Thank you. Penny Zuko, our purchasing agent. Thank you. And our facilities maintenance, Jamie Sikora is on the line. Anything?
Nothing, nothing to add. I was going to say that I already started, I contacted EverSource about the agreement and to kind of get some background on that, I did go to their website. There's a few other municipalities that have worked with them in the past that I've also in my previous role. in my previous role, have worked with those same municipalities. So I was going to reach out to them to kind of get a, a temperature check on what their thoughts were on it and if they entered into the same kind of agreement or not, as well as I'm already doing some homework to figure out their savings numbers and if it is accurate, as Ray already alluded to, just to make sure, because just a few wrong numbers here and there and those numbers can get skewed. I came from that side of the fence where we used to try and sell solar, so I understand some of the sales pitch and want to make sure that it's not a pitch that we're going to fall for at the city.
Right. The Zoom Room. Anything? Anything tonight, Mr. Oliver?
No, thank you. Not tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Waldron?
Nothing for me, Mayor, thanks.
Thank you, Councilwoman Wagner.
Nothing much, except there was a bad headline in the newspaper last week and, and I don't think the council members at that meeting opposed the cost of the school. We haven't gotten a final number yet.
No, I saw that. Yeah.
So I, I tried to correct that and ended up sending a letter to the editor. We're, we're, we have to let all those pieces come together.
That's all. Thank you. Councilwoman Rabino?
Nothing, Mayor.
Councilwoman Rowett?
I always have something, but I want to, I don't know if Chief Baldwin is still on there, but really, the communication that you send out to the council and the Board of Safety is, you know, very much appreciated. And you're always considerate of the event that's occurring, you know, throughout the city and the sensitivity, but just communication has been so good under your leadership, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
And I have nothing else.
Thank you. Councilman Cavanero?
Yeah, I'd like to follow up with comments at the beginning of the meeting, Mr. Doris. Do we have any sense from Eversource if they're going to make any effort whatsoever to actually remedy this, this nightmare of, of, of a patch job they've done on our streets?
So what I will do is I'll have our engineering department, Paul Cousins, come to the next council meeting and talk about the arrangement that we have with Eversource. What they are supposed to do is when they go in and they dig a trench, they replace a line, they fill the trench, they wait for compaction, but it is their responsibility, if the road is not on the rotation for complete reconstruction.
Yeah.
Or repave on the city's rotation, they're supposed to repave to the centerline, that portion of the road that they have dug up. So this is something that we have been working with Eversource on, and I will absolutely have him come before the board.
I'm, I am at a point, and I've talked to, I'm in the process of selling my mother's house on Princeton Avenue and have had to get that house, that old house up to code, talked to a number of, of, of local contractors about various things. Eversource always, conversation always comes back to Eversource one or another, and I'm told that they, one of the problems is they outsource that, the, the rebuild, and they outsource to multiple third parties, and therefore the responsibility, the, the liability's not on them, but on the third party, and this becomes this game that's being played. And if that is the case, if we can, if that is the case, I would strongly urge this city council to work with our mayor, to reach out to other municipalities who are having the same problem and, and coming up with some kind of joint, I don't know, resolution, some, some kind of communication that says, no, no, we're not going to be played by fools, you're not going to chop up our city or your personal, without some pushback from us. And, and I would like to see a more aggressive approach taken toward a remedy.
I, I will share that as recently as earlier this year, the city had undertaken, had attempted to undertake some measures that would require anybody that cuts into the road to pay a, a fee. That fee would be sunk to be used to do any repairs that were done, you know, substandard to the expectation of what they are supposed to repair the road to. We were met with considerable objection and some prior agreements were brought to light. But I will, again, let our city engineer and perhaps Mr. Drew can explain a little more about what our attempts are to hold their feet to the fire. This is unacceptable. We talk about at our Connecticut Conference of Municipalities all the time, you know, what do we do about franchise fees? You know, if they cut into our road, what are we going to do to make them accountable for a, a good repair to the road?
And, and Mayor, you should have, you as a leader of Torrington, should have support, active support from our representatives in Hartford, who can bring, who should be able to bring to bear considerable pressure on, on, on this vendor.
Yes.
And I would hope that we can bring them before us if, if, if we, you know, make enough noise to get them to understand how important it is, because I've, not you, not just you guys, but I've been hearing this a lot over the last six months, and it's time to get more aggressive, I think, in a remedy.
Yes.
Thank you. That's it for me.
Okay. I would only add the comment earlier this evening about the fountain, to leave it where it is. Wanted to share with the council, there's a letter on my desk. I had received some early indication in April that the state is undertaking an inventory of Olmsted Brother landscaping done throughout the state of Connecticut in celebration of Frederick Olmsted's 200th birthday. And there were four projects in the city of Torrington that were designs of the Olmsted Brothers, it was Charlotte Hungerford Hospital, the Center Congregational Church, Hillside Cemetery, and Fusich Park. And I'm happy and pleased to report that they will be here in September, the State Department, or, yeah, State Department of Historic Preservation, to document Fusich Park. And they are going to be creating what they call a Olmsted Trail that will be promoted as part of a tourism promotion. And I immediately wrote to SHPO about our fountain when I first realized that the state was undertaking this effort and informed them that the fountain was also an Olmsted product, and they will also be documenting that.
Can I have one more thing?
Sure.
The original comments, can we, is it possible to get, to take that up as, as a discussion to see what they are talking about? A feasibility discussion about that? I know it's more complicated than what the letter, you know, there, there are a lot of liabilities involved in what you guys are asking, okay? And that's going to be a big part of that discussion, but I think it merits, and I, I love encouraging people to come forward with, you know.
Absolutely.
Fresh ideas that, that could be helpful. So I'd like to push it forward formally, if we could.
Yes. Another legal opinion that I've asked Corporation Counsel to, to bring forward with regard to the powers of the Park and Recreation Commission.
Yeah.
In regard to their care and custody of the property. So that is embedded in their authority under the charter, but I will absolutely have Corporation Counsel do some opinion.
Okay, thank you.
If there are no other questions or comments, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rowett. Councilwoman Wagner, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.